Okay, if we're streaming then we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We appreciate everybody being here tonight. Looks like we're missing Councilman White. I haven't heard. Hopefully he'll slip in a little later, but for now Mark King's absent. Councilman Allen, would you mind giving us a word of prayer to begin? And then we'll go ahead and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet this evening, be able to meet and discuss the needs of the town which we live in. And we express our gratitude for this great area that we live in, some of the people in our community and all that they do to support us. And we ask that we can be glad and guided to make the best decisions that we can and be mindful of all those, especially any who are suffering and have special needs. We're grateful for all those who sacrificed so much to give us the freedoms that we have in the city's name in Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have the minutes from October 1st. Any amendments or questions?
I didn't see any. We approved them last. Someone saw something I missed.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. On the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those are approved. We do have our public comment period at the beginning of each meeting. Anyone in the public can take up to three minutes to address the council. Are there any here tonight who would like to take that opportunity? Seeing none, we'll move on with our meeting agenda. We do have the Union Coopers girls basketball teams and representatives from that team here tonight. We'll go ahead and put you at the beginning of our meeting instead of at the end.
Perfect.
Unless you really want a, you know, just a really good, you know, example of what government looks like, I think.
I think we're fine to go first.
So we'll go ahead and put you at the top of our agenda. Who with your team is the spokesperson?
I need to be the spokesperson. So I've never been to a city council meeting before, so I appreciate you guys inviting us. But we have three of our players here. I think it's one of them.
Yeah.
So we have one from our top three grades. I didn't get a freshman to come. But we are here to present something that we have planned. So when I was hired as a coach, one of the things that I really wanted to do was make basketball more relevant in our community. And I think-
And what is your name?
My, sorry, my name's Candy Oki. And I'm a teacher at high school and then this is my second full year coming into the basketball season. But we made a decision that one of the things we can do is to post a tournament. And we work really hard. We have an awesome field. We have 31 games scheduled. There's, I had to double check how many, but like seven varsity teams and programs, so varsity through sophomore programs coming into town. And that allows us to play here locally rather than travel and pay other people money for room or board and entry fees. And our parents are traveling, so we wanted to bring that here. So I've asked the girls to prepare just like a minute of your time. Like they wanted to share what this would mean to our program. Because what we're asking is the support of the city so we can use this as a way to fortify our athletic department, to make sure that our program is taken care of as far as like the girls and their needs. So I just wanted to then share for just a second.
Awesome. When you speak, do you just say your name for the right practice?
So my name is Haley Monier and I think it would be super beneficial because I'll just bet that the R team will also benefit like the city and like other teams that are also going to bring in. What was the number again?
There's seven programs, 31 teams.
What was the number that we're going to put for the other programs anymore? Like how much money are they going to spend that we need to talk about?
Oh, well, we just had talked about like the ability to, if we can have this go through, then the ability to share like the gate and the entry fees with the athletic departments and be able to not have to use that just for us.
Yes, and then also like with us bringing in teams, it'll also like be beneficial to you guys because also like you guys can make money off of like fast food and like staying at hotels and everything. But I just think it'd be beneficial for us and for you guys.
I'm Lydia Ho-Shower and it would be awesome to be able to host our tournament here. From like our last four years, every other time we go to tournaments, we're traveling three plus hours and then not being able to play on fresh legs. So that is a huge plus for us to be able to have other teams come here and be able to use our amazing facilities that we have. And then being able to play on fresh legs would also make it quite awesome.
So I have a question. You might have answered it. But is this the first time we've hosted one of these types of tournaments?
This would be our first.
To my knowledge, it's the first. I only lived here for four years, so I don't know.
So an in-season tournament, yeah, we've hosted other divisional tournaments and region tournaments and a state tournament. But an in-season tournament, this is the first basketball tournament that we would host.
Awesome.
Honestly, my goal is as it grows to hopefully include the boys team. It could be like a really cool holiday tournament. It's the week before Thanksgiving. It's just a fun way to kick off the season, so.
Do you want to drive up to Wyoming?
Oh, yeah, Green River. We've done that, haven't we? Negative.
I love that. I know Councilman Allen has worked with the girls softball teams and things like that to host some tournaments and they've been fantastic. So all of that that we can bring to our area is great.
Yeah.
I'm Anna Hadlock and I just love the idea of this tournament because it brings people to our small school and it'll get things circulating. It'll just help our basketball property grow. It'll get us more time in the gym before the season. It'll be good for us. The sport as a whole, I just think it's like a good idea to get things rolling.
Great.
Are you guys using the two gyms at Union and the Field House?
Yes.
Are you using any other or just those three?
So this year we're able to do it just with those three. We're able to schedule it out. We don't have to do it during school hours which the kids aren't missing school. But both of the main gyms at the high school and the Field House are both solid for those three.
We'd like to anticipate expanding it and even with the junior high and USU's gym, I know they've been, they've allowed us in the past to use it. Right now, we won't, we won't need that. And USU's been great to allow us to use it for practice or use the facilities. But right now it'd just be the Field House and the two gyms.
Awesome. Any other questions from the council?
Mayor, I don't have a question, just a conflict of interest. I'm on the Duchesne County School Board as well, so I don't know if I should vote on this or not. Grant, maybe you give me a-
You can vote on it if you stated your conflict.
Okay. Just making sure that I state my conflict.
I think it's wonderful. I think it's great what you're, what you're doing. I know a few councilmen responded to Mike Labrum. And I'm also in favor of helping out where we can, so. There's no question. It sounds like you're looking for $2,500 for a sponsorship.
Um, that's kind of what we're hoping. The officials are going to end up costing us about $5,000. But we kind of figured the rates have gone up for officials. For varsity games, you require them three a game. So if we can get that, then it will just keep that money in our program. We'd love to use the city as, you know, give them all the credit that we can to bring teams here, so.
I think there's advertising opportunities I could-
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, because they're like the banner, like naming you guys as like the primary sponsors. Yeah, sponsors. Yeah, we would love to have that. That would be amazing for us.
Any other questions?
No, I think this falls right in line with kind of the direction we've been going with rec and things like that. I would move to approve.
Okay, and then as far as funds, I know there's a question. So we have a motion, but really quickly, just do we want that to come out of the council discretionary funds? Or is there, we can pretty much-
That was what I was, along the lines I was thinking.
It's there. It's where you want to take it. We discussed it this morning and that was the primary perspective we had to use.
Probably the easiest with the budget and stuff.
Yeah.
Perfect. So motion on the floor with the-
Discretionary, using discretionary funds.
For $2,500?
$2,500.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
All second.
Second by Councilman Baird. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Perfect. Motion passes. Well, thanks for coming.
Thank you so much.
Doing things that we haven't done in our community before. That's excellent. I love that.
Hopefully we can continue it.
Thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you guys. We appreciate that.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
And you're welcome to stick around if you'd like.
That's pretty exciting.
Another sporting event, so. Thanks.
All right, we'll go ahead and move to Title VIII, Health and Safety. I think Councilman Boozmark, you've asked this to be on the agenda. So I'll turn it to you.
Yeah, I just think we should have a discussion. You know, over the years, I think we've got a great relationship with K&amp;K. I'm not concerned about that. I just feel like that as a city, it's just becoming more difficult for us to reconcile all the, you know, ins and outs and accounts. And we already have to do the sewer and the water and we have connects and different things there. There's some monies that some people get to help them with sewer and water, but not garbage. And so sometimes that becomes a problem. I know over the years, sometimes the city has ended up covering some of those expenses. So I just want to have a discussion of if maybe we want to reevaluate this and see where we might want to make some changes. I'm not trying to put anyone out of business. That's not my goal. I just want to put us out of the business of having to deal with the collections and the money side of things and pass that on to the actual people doing the work. And that's just my thoughts.
Got you. Really quick, Grant, on this, as I'm reading through. The city where it's an agent, so I'm guessing that K&amp;K would be dedicated as the city's agent at this point?
That's correct, through the contract.
Through the contract. So the contract specifies that.
It doesn't name them as an agent, but when we've kind of meshed those two together, that's always the way we treat this through contract, we're making them an agent even though it doesn't say they're an agent.
So I'm guessing now, Councilman Boozmark, is this, you're saying to the, so then it would basically open it up to free markets so that if another company wanted to provide service in our-
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. I would like to maybe recommend in the interim as we're phasing from what we're doing now to what we hope to get to, that maybe we would keep them initially and then yes, once we're done with that side, that then it could possibly, you know. But I think before we do that, there was a couple of, I think, things in the code that may need to be addressed to change that. Otherwise, we'd be going against our city code, so. And that's where I was hoping maybe we could, again, I'm not expecting any change. And I just put it as a discussion for us to maybe think about. I'm hoping, you know, Grant being here can, if you have any idea, I was hoping maybe Mike with the rural whatever group that, whatever their name is that helps us with our policy, maybe they could give us some ideas as well. I don't know what direction to go. I just, in my mind, what my direction is is that we wouldn't be in the business of having to collect that. We would focus on water and sewer and that garbage would be still required. That's, you know, and now that we have a person that can help with some code enforcement, we could, you know, require that. And but then we're not having to collect and reconcile and do some of that work that's, that really I think is taking away from our employees doing a job for the citizens of Roosevelt. They're dealing with an outside entity that I think it just adds to, it becomes more labor intensive than it should be, I think, in my mind.
Well, I can prepare a working draft on that would do what you're describing and then we can kind of go from there and modify it however you want. But with what you're saying right now, what I'll plan on preparing is to amend the ordinance so it's still requiring that they have a service provider, but it would be up to them to arrange it. And then I'll change some of this wording about what the city is saying it will do. It would kind of be removing the city other than just saying that there's garbage services required. And then we'd make it just kind of free market where people could arrange whatever.
I don't know how the other council man or woman-
What I was going to ask is just what's the appetite with the rest of the council as far as modifying that to possibly allow for some of those things? And if, and if the appetite's there, if the consensus is there, then I'd say absolutely. Yeah, let's get started on it. But we'd like to hear from some of the other councils for your thoughts on that.
So I personally, I think anything that deregulates allows more free market competition is good. So that's how I feel about it.
I have come home feeling, as long as I've been here, I don't think either the city or Kettles have been happy with. There's always been issues and taking that out of the city's hands, I think is a positive step.
One thing I- Sorry?
Oh, good.
One thing I wonder is how are we, is it giving the city another job? If we're free marketing, regulating, do you have an account? Do you have an account? Are you really getting your garbage picked up? Do you, can you see what I'm saying? Like, is there a way for them to improve that? That is how you create a job of someone walking around and-
Yeah, and the way that's come up, well, the way that I've assumed that would work, because this is not the first time this idea has been floated, is that we would be strictly enforcing the nuisance ordinances, probably not necessarily going to make sure that everybody had a contract in place. We would put in here that it was required, but probably wouldn't put a lot of effort into policing that unless we found a place that there was a problem with the nuisance ordinance. And then we would be checking to see if they even had a service provider. If there were no problems coming up, but I'm not sure that we'd worry too much about that.
There are two questions that came up for me when you were describing that. And that is if somebody wanted to take their own trash down. Well, there's a couple of things that happen. They could technically, because this even says in our ordinance is that they can haul their own trash to, you know, the dump or wherever they want. So as long as they're not, the trash isn't piling around their house and they're not becoming a nuisance, wouldn't require that. And then the second thing that I got thinking of is we've got to be careful because we do have dumpsters placed throughout the city that are commercial dumpsters and-
And neighbors have trash cans. We thought about that too, that the possibilities were that they either have somebody coming in to pick up the trash, that they're hauling it themselves or that they're trying to take advantage of a neighbor, whether it's commercial, government, or residential. And that would be considered theft of services if they're trying to use somebody else's can. And so we would just have to watch that and police it if we thought that there was a problem. But so those, the concerns that you guys have raised are the ones that have come up every time that we've talked about this idea. I think that we can deal with them. It would just be on a case by case basis.
I just want, part of the reason I also wondered if we need to look at what other cities, kind of how they put that in their code, because a lot of cities don't, you know, or they either have their own garbage, and I would assume smaller ones probably either do what we did contract out or they just let them do it. So it might be good to look that way and-
And I have done that before and I can do it again and talk to rural community consultants to have them send us some-
Yeah, I just know once you have to put a ton of work, but I think it would be good to have a draft to look at, to just consider. And like I said, we don't have to make the change. I just would like to have the discussion because of some of the issues we've had over the, you know.
In the research I've already done on that, I couldn't find any that didn't have the nuisance ordinances. And some of them not look like that's all they were relying on was their nuisance ordinance to make sure the refuse wasn't collecting on properties. And then there were some, but not a lot, where like us, where there was a contractor. There are some cities that provide the service themselves. And then I did find some that I would plan to use as a model for what I think you're describing, where they did have a provision saying you had to have a service provider. And then the nuisance ordinances looked real similar to ours. And so I think that's probably what I would get as an initial draft. And then you guys can tell me whether you liked or not that we could do more or less.
Before, really quickly, just a thought. I would like to make sure that we go and get a sample, a poll of cities and just see who does and who doesn't have a dedicated agent and just kind of get a little feedback that way. But that's all I would say, I would like to say, just to, because then it's going to give us feedback as far as the problems that they've had and the goods and the masks that we can repair. But I'm not, I'm more along the lines of Councilman Baird of a free market idea. I just want to make sure that as we pursue that, if we pursue that, that some of the concerns like Councilman Goodrich has rubbed, that-
There's a pretty good city managers network where they ask questions like that. I can talk to Josh about sending out an email and then just seeing what kind of response we get. Are you mainly wanting the question to just be, is there anybody that just lets free market control? And if so, what problems have you had? Or are you wanting the question to be different?
Basically that. And then just kind of an idea of how many, just a sample pulling. I know we can't pull every single city, but just to get an idea of what percentage-
Kind of each way.
Yeah, what percentage of cities have an agent, which percentage of cities don't. And then kind of the cities that don't, how they've handled, you know, that free market idea.
And I wonder with the free market concept, I guess, you know, there's also allowing the market to compete for a contract with the city as well. And I wonder if it's better to, like I wonder what would save the citizens most money to let people compete for a contract with the city. Do it that way because they get a time of business cycle with the city, even if we split up into two? Or if we'd say more money by letting free market compete? I just, I wonder, will it be more advantageous?
And I brought that concern up just earlier today, saying, you know, we lose our leverage as a city to be able to consolidate and hopefully drive prices down for our residents. I would, I would hate to see hate, but I would hate to see our residents' prices go up because we don't have longer have a contract. If we did have another competing entity, I could see that those rates would be held in check. But if not, like one of the garbage companies bought out the other garbage companies and they eliminated a competitor, so how many, how many actual options do our citizens have? And will they be able to find a rate?
So and the city, the city itself could explore that a little bit, trying to get quotes from other providers for our own garbage and just see if the rates were competitive on that. And then just hope that there was a similar, similar level, not a level of services, but similar price comparison, I guess, on the residential. So if you want us to, I think we could try to get some quotes and just see how competitive they were from other providers.
That would be great.
I just think it's, all I want to do is have a discussion, look at some things. I don't, you know, like I said, I'm not trying to action anything. I think we need more information, but I do like the discussion. Because it can also add, another concern related to garbage is I know that we have some that are leaving dumpsters on sidewalks and stuff and we're going to lose some of our sidewalk. They're putting them in areas that are causing problems and I don't know. I think it's in our, in there, but if it is, we need to make sure we're monitoring that. If it's not, maybe we need something stronger in there to make sure. We don't want to break up, you know, things that we expect to last a while. And so that's another concern that we have. And it's not, I think there's other entities bringing cans or dumpsters in, right? I've heard that.
I don't think there is right now. The contract is for exclusive, exclusive service, but it's possible that somebody has major agents and anyone not aware of us.
Some shiny.
Oh, I need to share my experience trying to get a dumpster. I contacted other service providers just because K&amp;K didn't have one available when I needed it. And the only people I was able to talk to would only provide a like in a commercial, a big commercial rollaway one. I don't believe there's anybody who provides smaller, you know, like residential dumpsters, those sorts of things.
Like a three yard or six yard.
Yeah, I wasn't able to find anybody who would bring me anything smaller than like the big ones, the rollaways that they use for construction.
And I know there, I've heard secondhand, it's not firsthand, that some of the other companies have been reluctant to do that because they know about this exclusive.
That's what I was also told.
Yeah, and so if the city may change as allowing this, I think that that could change, but there's no guarantee. I might either have to try to get some quotes and see.
Well, I think you've got direction, right, Mayor? I think that's what we want to do, is just explore and see what's out there and what's available and address our concerns. And if it looks feasible, then I would say we could look a gun forward. But, you know, we do want to make sure we're doing the best for our citizens and that's part of why they do this, is negotiating the deal. I just don't know if that's what's happening sometimes, so.
I think that's good discussion and good direction and-
Yeah, I'll work with Josh and we'll leave the questions to ask and I'll start on the draft and I'll work with the rural communities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. So Ballard sewer contract renewed, discussion, Councilman Boozmark also-
Yeah. So I was more just looking for information because- So this contract with Ballard City was drafted in 1986. Kind of nothing wrong with the fact they drafted 1986. It was renewed in 2016. And I probably didn't read it close enough, but there were just a couple of things in the, I guess you could say, the amendment. And maybe this is a grant question as well, but there's just a couple of things I have concerns on. It may just be I'm not reading it. I'm not, according to this, I understand, Grant, it's like every five years that we renew this, so we're kind of in between.
Yeah, 2026 would be the next time.
Right, and so I'm not looking for action. It's more just, I'm just curious. So on the amendment page, just a couple of questions. It says it's to a Ballard will pay to Roosevelt 90% of the monthly rate charged by Roosevelt to its citizens and businesses for connections. I didn't understand why they were paying less than our citizens.
Yeah, so that, so they retain like 10% for their admin fees and things like that. So that's our line that they're tapping into the 1500 East line. We own it. We have to make repairs. So as they're billing, it's their customer and they're billing their customer. They're paying Roosevelt City 90% of what they get from their customer.
But are they, but the question I guess is, is, because the way it reads to me is if we charge $20 for sewer, they're only paying $18 for sewer.
They're paying Roosevelt City 18, but they're probably charging their customer 20 or 21 or 22.
So it's basically saying that Ballard will pay us 90% of what Roosevelt City's charging Ballard.
Right. Ballard are charging, because it says Roosevelt Citizens, what they're charging Roosevelt.
Well, it's based on our fee schedule.
Right, so they're paying 90%. So my question again, and I'm not saying anyone's doing anything wrong. I'm just trying to understand why are they, because their citizens don't live in Roosevelt. I know they're close and I know they're good neighbors, but why are they paying less than our citizens for the same service?
Probably not. It's just that they're paying their administrative fees to Ballard and then Ballard has to pay us 90% of what we're charging our residents. I haven't seen Ballard's fee schedule, but when this was negotiated, it was anticipated that Ballard residents would be paying more than the Roosevelt residents. And then Ballard would be collecting the fees, keeping an administrative fee from theirself of at least 10% and then sending 90%.
And they deal with all the sewer problems and everything else. We own the line, so it, you know, at some point in time, we might have to replace that line. But the, you know, their, their water and sewer department takes care of all the-
Maintenance.
Yeah, maintenance currently in everything.
I guess it just struck me, like, again, I'm not anti-Ballard or anything. It just strikes me funny when I read that, that it looks like their citizens who don't pay taxes necessarily other than if they buy stuff in Roosevelt, which I'm sure they do, they don't, you know, any of the other taxes, they don't pay because they're in Uintah County. So they're paying, it looks to me like, again, when you read that, that they're paying less than what our citizens are paying. And I just want to understand why.
Their, their, them as an entity, yes. Their residents, not necessarily. But yes, their Ballard City is discounted 10% below what our residents are being charged.
So for every connection, they pay 90% of what we will take.
Right, I'm still not sure. I get what you're saying. I'm not sure that I necessarily- I, I, still not sure, I, I, I get what you're saying, I'm not sure that I necessarily agree, but I'm just, like I said, when I read that, it also says on the next one, be all other lines. Ballard will pay to Roosevelt sixty percent of the month rate charged by Roosevelt to its citizens and business for sewer, delivered to the treatment facility through collection lines owned by Ballard. So because Ballard owns them, they pay us less?
Yeah, so how it used to work is there was a meter that was installed and they were supposed to pay us.
Based on the meter?
Based on the effluent, uh, going through that meter, but the meter never really worked. And so, uh, they, we have read, really not gotten anything from Ballard for quite a long time. And this came up in around the time that you're talking, well, when I was first on the council in two thousand thirteen, it was a hot topic. And it took several years to work through. But we don't charge for effluent anymore, we just charge sixty percent of the rate, which is basically the effluent going in.
So what you're saying is they're keeping the difference because their lines, they're maintaining those lines. But the ninety percent, aren't we maintaining our line still or are they the, the?
We're maintaining.
Yeah, we would maintain the.
Right, so that's what I'm saying is that one. Um, there's also just a couple more here, and again, I'm just trying to clarify, 'cause I don't understand legally sometimes. I'm not the brightest guy around, as you guys know. It says Ballard will have no liability or responsibility for unit cost of operating, maintaining and future expansion of the sewer treatment system and facilities.
And we, we were the ones that insisted on that provision. And the reason is that when we were renegotiating this in two thousand sixteen, Ballard had kind of worked into a position that they thought they were a partner in the facility. And we were wanting to make it very clear that no, it's our facility, basically, they're a customer. And so to make sure that that stayed clear, we added this provision. And instead of them sharing in costs for maintenance and that, we, we just wanted to collect on the number of connections and then we would take care of the facility and pay for whatever impact they were having through the money that they were sending us for those connections.
Our, their, their impact fees too, a portion of those impacted.
Yeah, that's the next line, that's the next section. It says, uh, Ballard will pay for, to Roosevelt for any new connections by Ballard to the Roosevelt City line on fifteen hundred east. Two-thirds, I didn't wanna read the other part, two-thirds of the rate Roosevelt City charges its residents for new connections, which presently is two thousand as an impact fee and a twenty-five dollar inspection. So they pay two-thirds of, of what our, so a new connection in Roosevelt, they pay two thousand plus twenty-five. Ballard pays two-thirds of that, is what I'm reading.
And the reason for.
On that, on that line, but that line is one that's owned by Ballard, I believe.
No, fifteen hundred east is us.
What's, no, it's the Independence line, are you reading that number four?
Yeah, it says the Roosevelt by fifteen hundred east.
Oh, okay.
Isn't that fifteen hundred east ours or is that independent?
Independence Road and fifteen hundred east is the same road now.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, that's our line though, right?
Do we collect any impact fees other than on fifteen hundred east?
Only on fifteen hundred east.
So that's, that's a question in my mind, whether or not we wanna relook at that. But ultimately, what we were trying to accomplish is where we've got no payment up to that point. Our thoughts were, they're a customer, they're not a partner. They, they really, I mean, that was a battle that we fought for quite some time.
Five hundred years.
Yeah, and because they had paid three hundred and change in the development of those sewer ponds down there. And I think it was, I can't remember, maybe twenty-five percent or something like that of the overall down payment, uh, match funding or maybe even thirty percent. So they felt like they were, uh, a partner and Roosevelt City wanted to make it clear that those were our sewer ponds and that we would develop them and expand them as we need. But Ballard's relationship with Roosevelt is that they just need to pay their, their proportionate share of the impact on those ponds, so that if, like our line on fifteen hundred east or the ponds ever need expanded, we, we will have collected, uh, those payments to offset whatever the expansion would be. And so that's where the sixty percent thing in, ninety percent thing in and everything else, so.
Okay, well, I, I, again, I wasn't here, I came on the council after this was negotiated and so I, and I appreciated that thirty years later, you got something in, 'cause before that, it hadn't been looked at for thirty, since nineteen eighty-six. Uh, number five says no limitations, there will be no limitations on the use by Ballard to the system and adding future connections. I'm a little concerned there because we have, Kirby, you were telling me, right now we're at a million and we can.
Yeah, it's, it's designed for one point five million, they've already got.
Yeah, well, and again, the philosophy behind that is if they, if they put in enough connections to do, to, to increase that, they should be paying through their fees enough to, so that we can expand that. So if they grow at a much higher rate than we do, they're still, they're paying Roosevelt City for that use. And if that's not the right number, then we can look at that. But ultimately, the whole goal is, if they put in five hundred connections, that's fine, because we're gonna get, we should, in my opinion, the only thing I flaw, the main flaw that I see so far is that we're not charging impact fees on every connection. Now, maybe it's a little less percentage than the Independence line, but we still, just like proportionately, it's ninety and sixty. It should be this and this for impact fees, so that as they're impacting our sewer ponds, then we have the, the money collected from that that we can actually utilize for, you know, match funding, you know, and, and expansion.
So do the, do the Ballard citizens pay Ballard to get connection or do they come to Roosevelt?
Ballard.
So they go to Ballard, do they then contact us and just say, hey, we have, uh, three new connections, five new, one?
Yeah, I, up near the top, it talks about how that was gonna work. Uh, and they're supposed to be updating this monthly. I asked Ron about this today, he said there have been no new connections, there have been, there have been different customers at the same connections, but no.
Okay, I, I just didn't know, 'cause it does say Roosevelt shall derive upon ten days' notice at its expense, of course, to audit the number of new connections we have had.
Yeah, yeah, like number six.
Yeah, that's, and that seems standard, I'm not really concerned about that. I was more just trying to figure out how Ballard gets their connection versus, 'cause I know Roosevelt citizens would come here, right, to pay for that.
I think it's, yeah, maybe I can three, you could answer a little bit such.
It says C, I think it's C, connection count. Ballard will provide Roosevelt by the fifteenth of the month to count the number of connections, so.
Yeah, so they're supposed to be updating this monthly on how many connections they have. And then down in six is where on ten days' notice, we can do an audit if we don't.
And there's, and there's no way for someone other than to get connection unless they've contacted Ballard to get a connection, right? There's not any way for them to access it unless they've.
And on the things you're pointing out, Don, it was a difficult negotiation back at the time. We, when it started, we were a long ways apart, had drastically different views of what the relationship was between Roosevelt and Ballard, uh, which is why we had, like the provision we talked about, trying to make it clear that they're not a partner and that we didn't want for them to be involved in the, in some expansion. There was a lot of give and take, this, it didn't end up exactly where we would have wanted it. But from where we started, this is what the council at the time was happy with. And I agreed with them that this got us a long ways to where we needed to be. But, uh, in two thousand twenty-six, when we get to the end of the second five-year period from the adandum, if you guys want to bring it up, we can revisit some of those things. And I don't disagree at all with what you, you're saying and with what JR pointed out, with the impact fees. And I would definitely not be opposed to changing the percentages on, on what we collect, we just have to negotiate with them again.
Right, and I, and I think that's, all I'm asking is, I, I was more clarifying, so I appreciate that JR was here last time and you were. So you, I just, when I read it, it didn't seem fair necessarily to our citizens. And, I mean, they had unlimited connections, they weren't paying the same hookup, they were paying less, et cetera. But I think I understand a little better, still, I think it needs to be addressed in the future. But I, I understand sometimes that give and take, you get the best deal you can, maybe knowing forward down the road, you can get even a better deal.
I'll be honest, I, to, to even get this, I was pleasantly surprised.
Right.
Because how far apart we were.
Yeah, and I felt the same way, and especially on making it clear that it's not a partnership. It's, when we started having disputes, that was the biggest concern Roosevelt had. And in the original agreement, it was kinda hard to tell what it was supposed to be. So that was our primary objective. We got what we wanted on that, there was give and take on some of the other things. Uh, at the time, uh, the council, I think, felt that what we were allowing for their administrative fees was okay.
Right, I'd just be curious what, what they're charging now and what they're, you know, collecting related to the, just out of curiosity, not that we necessarily need to address those, other than I think the, the impact fee, I think maybe needs to be addressed. But I hope that, like I said, my thing was just trying to clarify. Now I better understand going forward, when we get to twenty twenty-six, if, you know, some of us are still here. Hopefully, that's something we can look at and try to, uh, negotiate, you know, uh, as best we can. And, and again, uh, concern is, uh, as Kirby said, we're at a million, million five, and it says no limitation. And I don't expect Ballard to grow by five hundred connections, but at some point, we're gonna, we're gonna have to start looking at, you know, adding some infrastructure. And as Kirby's, I think we were talking earlier, if, once you reach a certain point, the state requires you to have, what's it called? A, a plant of some type, and that could run into a lot of money.
One of the things that I think would be good too, and I know John was here at the time, Zyliss, and he's, he's one of the best that I know at numbers and being able to project these things, and I'm confident that he was involved in coming up with those percentages. But we can look at those again and just make sure that those numbers actually are fair, uh, in, in relationship. But again, yeah, I, it's gonna be a, almost a year and a half before.
Yeah, there's not a rush on it, it just, I put it on there because I just wanted to get clarification on what it means. Now I understand that part, like I said, I can wait a year and a half or whatever and then.
Can you go down to the very bottom section and see what it's dated? I don't remember what month it was.
The dates are at the top, actually.
It was September of twenty-one, twenty sixteen, so five years would be September.
It's the day of March, oh, one.
Oh, that's. It's September, it was September of twenty sixteen, I don't remember the date.
Okay, so that, whatever that date was on the adandum.
So we're most two years.
In two thousand twenty-six, when we would.
Yeah, so like I said, for me, it was more clarification, that's why it's not an action item, it was more discussion, because I just didn't understand. And like I said, I don't know that I necessarily agree, but I can also appreciate negotiating with another entity. And I don't disagree, I think keeping it as ours as opposed to being a partner, I think solves a lot of issues, because who's responsible for what, sometimes having dealt with the school district, uh, both when, you know, having the school on the county line, there's been issues that way, who's responsible for what, if something happened on Uinta County, we had to call the sheriff versus if it happened on Roosevelt, and they'd actually ask that until it was annexed in. Um, and I know we've had other issues that way. So I know it can be difficult in, in those negotiations. Um, and I do agree, I think it's better for us to be in charge and that you're, they're paying us. I might, and I didn't understand that exactly, but now that helps me better understand that part.
One thing to think about too is, uh, if you're going to need sewer services, you're gonna have to have water. And they don't have a really good source of water right now. So I don't see a lot of growth in Ballard until they do remedy that.
And that was one of the things that was talked about when some of the Roosevelt City council members during the negotiations, uh, in the beginning were adamant that they wanted there to be a cap on how many new connections they could have. In the end, that's kind of why I think we agreed to take all of that out, is we didn't think they had enough water to expand beyond our ability to take.
Well, we've helped them with that recently.
They haven't taken any water.
They haven't used any water yet, but we've at least helped them. We have the water now to fifteen hundred east, right, so they can access it if they need it. Um, and so that could, if, if they saw that as potential growth, but they pay for that at a different rate, right, and stuff.
And we knew at the time we were negotiating this, that their, um, water supply issues could, could change. You know, it was a risk we were taking to.
Well, and I don't think it's a risk now, I think you're, I think they were spot on. I don't think it's a risk even now, 'cause we're, they're not utilizing it, just something down the road, they potentially could, but there is a cost for it, so.
But I, one thing that I think, that came up that I think is important to, to mention, and I know I've mentioned it since I became mayor, and I think it's something that we, we've gotta be very, uh, careful of as we're talking about water. And that is we have, and we will have, I, I'm getting hit up frequently with people outside the city limits that are wanting water connections and, and us to expand our system in different areas. And I really think until we have a good grasp on what our water usage will be, if we build out Roosevelt, the developments and opportunities that we have here, we should be very cautious to continue to, to give connections to our water outside Roosevelt City, unless they're going to annex in and, and they can annex in. But it's a finite resource, it's getting harder and harder to get, uh, the state, you know, with the drought and things becoming drier and drier, we've gotta be very careful, because we are going to give our growth to an area outside our limits and we're not very careful on how we administer that. So I don't know if the study's been done yet.
Yeah, it's a four-year plan, we've actually done it.
Yeah, you presented.
If you want, we can have Sawyer.
I have a poor memory, so it's probably been presented twenty times already and I'm.
Not twenty, but at least, I remember once.
See if it needs updated again and finding some of the numbers, 'cause it always has to be, is it five years for a four-year plan? So that date's probably coming up.
And I guess it just put my, my mind at ease, and I can meet with, with you, you know, independent of the meeting, and we don't need to bring it up in a meeting. I would just like to see it, to set my mind at ease. And I think if we get better counsel, if they haven't seen it or they don't remember that they saw it like me.
I think.
It's pretty exciting stuff, you know.
For me, it is.
I, I actually just wanna add that I, I've really appreciated how well we're doing with water compared to other cities. I think Roosevelt has set themselves up well, not, I'm not, it's not my fault, it's past councils and everyone, but it, the, the employees, et cetera. But to have the two main gallon tank in, I think it's been a huge boon, uh, getting the grant that we're working on with some things. But just, you know, the secondary water and trying to get those hookups, I think we've set ourselves up better than a lot of cities that are really struggling to find. And I'm not saying we shouldn't be cautious, like you're saying, Mayor. I think we need to be very diligent as we consider those things. But I, but I just appreciate how much better, and, 'cause, you know, when you talk to people from other cities, that's usually a number one concern in a lot of cities is water and.
And constraint.
And, yeah.
That I've seen on the Mossach front.
Right.
They can't grow because they don't have the water.
Right, and we're, I'm not saying we need to, you know, grow a million people, but I'm saying, right where we're at, we're in a good place. And it comes down to past councils having foresight, um, you know, the employees and others doing a good job uh, with those resources and knowing that they were important, and so I appreciate that. And we need to continue being wise stewards of that as well going forward, so I agree with you. But, you know, anyway, I just wanna add that.
On this one, um, unless there's something specific you want me to do right now, I won't be working on it, but I'll be ready in two thousand twenty-six.
Yeah, I think that'd be fine, if, if you just, you know, we'll try to have a mental note or whatever, just say, let's revisit it, like maybe that spring, so we can start think, looking at it and see, seeing if we need to get with Ballard City. And I don't think there's any, like I said, and I'm not upset about it, it's more just like I said before, it's informative, 'cause I didn't understand the numbers. And Kirby and I looked at it and we both kinda looked at each other, I don't know what this means. And, and it was just, and, and like I said, the concern is that we're not maxed out on our sewer, but, you know, we're starting to get up there where if we have to put a sewer plant in or something, that's a huge cost to a community, you know, and, and we don't wanna have to do that. So we need, just like with the water, we need to be careful as we go forward as well and make sure we're doing it, you know, prudently.
I'll go ahead and calendar it right now, just a reminder for you guys, March of twenty-six.
Yeah, I think that's great, just, yeah.
Okay, I'll bring it back up in. Okay, I'll bring it back up in early March.
And I apologize, you know, it feels like I'm jumping the gun. I just didn't understand.
That's perfect timing for me, actually.
Yeah, it'd be gone, you won't care.
Okay, I'll bring it back to you.
And so will Dustin, so... Dave's smiling, too, saying, I won't have to worry about it.
Well, thanks for that discussion.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's move on. Expenditure approval and financial review, just expenditure approval.
Yeah, I approve. I didn't see anything better questions on.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Second, my councilman, Alan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Capital project updates. And then I, I don't have a backside to the agenda after, but I guess it is pretty much done.
City manager report and future...
And we don't need closer...
I'll do capital projects, if you have anything, show it, city manager report.
Yeah, I do that, and then, yeah, I've got a few things out of each, and then Josh gave me two as well, so... Start off with the capital projects. Every project still, even the ones that we've had the grand openings for, still things we're trying to peck away, knock off the list. So there's active things being done at each one. I'm not gonna go over a detail on all of them, so if you have questions, please, now's the time. I'll highlight a couple things. Our Innovation Hub, we are pretty much ready. We have cabinets in, we don't have cabinet, the countertops here yet, but we have cabinets in, and the furniture's in, the office desks are all in, so the internet's working, cameras are working. If you want to go look through there, just stop by here, let me know when I can get you in there, and you can look around and see other things. So the big dilemma we have with the Innovation Hub is, we set October 29th as our opening day, and we haven't advertised it a whole lot. And Strata has a barbecue going on that same night. So we're wondering if we can, we need to hear, kick it this into the next week, if it fits your guys' schedules.
I told you, I'll make work what I can, be there for what I can be, but...
So Josh was wondering the first week in November, if that's possible for any of you, because by now, it's gonna get a little chilly and...
We could do an election day, November 5th. That would be fun.
I'll be gone that week, but that, you can have it without me here, and be fine.
And what week are you thinking? The 4th through the...
4th. 4th through the 8th, if that works for you guys. If not, I mean, you pick a day. I just, I should say week.
Well, don't go on the 5th, that's election day.
Was the 30th a bad day? If we bumped it just one day? Was that something people...
I think so. The 30th would work for me. We wanna avoid Halloween night, which is the max, so we want to smup at the day.
Should we just do the 30th?
I can do the 28th, 29th, or 30th.
I could do any of those days, too.
Just tell me, and I'll make whatever...
30th was on the original...
I don't think it was. 28th was...
The 28th was, and I don't know if there's a reason why it wasn't on there with some of the staff's schedules, but...
I don't recall.
I don't recall there being a problem on the 30th.
I mean, the 30th is an issue, but the 30th, I can't do it on the 1st.
I could, I mean, I think it'd be okay to schedule for either the 28th or the 30th.
Why don't you, Ryan, do what you do. I say, why don't you do the 30th, but check with Josh, and if it's better the 28th, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine with me. Either of those days.
30th at 5:00 PM, yeah.
All right.
Very good. Yep.
So the grand opening, basically, just come and see is what it's gonna be, and maybe some activities.
Yeah, we're planning, we're gonna be planning that Thursday. The details, we've got a lot of little things happening, but getting the bulk of it together when we finish that.
And you're having someone paint the side of the ambulance building?
Okay.
Or is that...? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You're good.
I'm just wondering if they can paint over where it says ambulance.
Maybe I'll just cancel, close that.
So we do have in the works, that we're gonna get that painted. The mural, we've got a sample in and a bid and everything in for that. However, he is not interested, and he does not wanna do it till spring. But we're gonna put a primer on it for now, and paint it and clean it up.
I wondered about having a community input on a mural, like when people design one. That could be part of our...
Or at least feedback on it, making sure that, that's, you guys will be canceled. Do you have the concept?
Did he email that to you?
I have a...
We talked about it this morning, and we knew...
I wouldn't have time if it's not going to be till spring, but I agree.
Is it, like, part of the open house could be...
He's probably got five or six different murals that he paints, and maybe we could...
Right, but if it was something that the community had something to put on, I think that'd be kinda cool.
And if you don't mind, I'll call, and you can pass it down. This is just what he sent to us this morning.
No, I like that. I like the bottom one personally. That's just me personally.
So there's a pronoun.
The pole, this little antenna, it's coming down. You see that? Yeah, Teddy's antenna is coming down. It's a break in.
Yeah, see, that's the one I would've chosen.
Either how you wanna do it, it's just not till spring.
Right.
I like the second one, too, the bottom one there. But I don't disagree with the councilwoman, Getridge, so maybe if he could get us maybe a couple more options, and then we could put like four out and have people vote on it. I think might be good for those that come to the hub to see what's in there and give them a chance to vote.
Yeah, okay. That would be cool this summer, too. You know, come see the Innovation Hub and have an opportunity to vote for the mural.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that. We can set up, can we get some sign?
Yeah, I'm on Facebook. That's been really good with the logo changes and stuff, so...
Oh, my goodness.
Well, we can...
I'm gonna die. But to answer your question, Juan, we will have a link up. We'll be painting the address every covered up.
Perfect. That was nice.
Any questions on the Innovation Hub?
Well...
Okay. The In God We Trust thing here, I heard was brought up, so it's ordered, and it's, it was coming down here at all, correct?
I thought it was gonna be up, but I could be wrong.
I think the final decision was...
Okay, I must've been out of town.
You scared me for a minute, because I was going down there, and it hasn't... But it is ordered, hopefully, by our next council meeting, it'll be up, so we'll see.
Cool.
Come through that, so... Aaron wanted me to bring up the pickleball courts. The date, he'll be discussing that Thursday, but we're leaving, I believe, Richard will be there as well.
Yes, but Jeremy said he wasn't gonna be there, so I don't know what pickleball people will be there.
Yeah, Aaron's been talking to everyone, they kinda have it lined up. So hopefully, they'll deal with us on the date part, and they'll come on that as well.
But we're not doing them all together anymore?
Not from what I heard. Is that, do you want me to...
I just thought last one, what you decided, was to do them all together, but...
Yeah, it was discussed earlier that maybe it's best, because it's two different ones going on, so if that's all right. I have no preference.
It really matters.
So we'll see what pickleball discusses.
Yeah, maybe go to the meeting, find out, and then discuss that.
Yeah, we can make it happen.
Okay.
Let us know on the Thursday, and it would be easier to do it all in one night.
When you just get everybody out at once.
Yeah. Maybe they have something specific planned for grand opening.
I don't know.
Tournament or something.
I don't know.
If they wait too long, it's not gonna be... Yeah, it's, we'll wait, we'll do it in spring.
Okay, we can look, see what comes from that, so... Um, let's see. I lost my train of thought here. We met last week on the Cottonwood Creek Trail, phase two. I really appreciate passing that off, so we'll get down on that. The two things we're gonna get hard on is the right of ways to get them done. That's kinda holding us up right now on that project. And then we've got sunrise engineering, working out bids, packages for the asphalt, so we can get in line. Because last time, we about missed the vote on that, so... We'll at least be in line to be able to pay next summer on that, so... Any questions on the trail? Real quick, nature park, just a couple little teeny things. I know we've been, there's been a couple questions out there as far as the fishing pier. The DWR is still looking into fixing that. I don't even know if you guys even know what's going on there, but... We've got a guy that's gonna come out and work some hours off and weld something around it and heat it up, so... Hopefully, we can withstand the kids, party, or whatever's going on on there. The donation sign, UTEC has that done, so we'll be setting that up probably next week. I wasn't gonna bring this up, I'm getting it, just 'cause we've got all night, and I'm just not rolling on. We brought up a while ago an entrance gate for the nature park. It may come up again. We're just right in the middle of monitoring, and we're just having a few issues. And we know it's not gonna solve it all, but if we can take care of some of it, that would be great. But we've got a few people that think they can camp and plug into the pavilion with an extension cord and a little bit of, you know, it's an art in law, I guess. So, anyway, I'm still liking data on that, just to, that's why I need to bring that back. So I know maybe we can pay them about that on that one. Plus, the funding's there already, because it was through the org grants, so... Any questions on that one? Okay, so I updated Mayor Burr a little bit on the gun range. Not a whole lot of updates on it. However, I have been putting a lot of pressure on him. And I think he's getting a little antsy now, and he's putting pressure on Jennifer in Denver. But that EA assessment, the environmental assessment's the only thing that's in our way right now. And when it's cleared, we just gotta have it open for a 30-day comment period. And we haven't hit that mark yet, but they're telling us it's close. So I will definitely, like, you know, wanna find out. I've heard that story many times. I get tired, I definitely memorize. Give me a look in my notes.
Yeah, that's your fault.
But I think Gary's getting sick of me, like, oh my gosh, it's drying again, but...
Which agency again? I think I've asked this before. Which agencies doing that, need on that?
It's through the division, but I don't know which, exactly which one it is that's actually funding it. That's what's funny about this.
I'm just wondering why, why it's going into comment, you know, that's, I guess...
Is that part of...
They don't have to, but...
We already did one study up there, it's an environmental study.
Uh-huh. Remember what that one was called?
Yeah.
Uh, but we walked that with that...
It was the cultural one.
Cultural.
Cultural resource. Yeah, that's, that's required for the EPA to occur, the EA.
And then, we didn't even know about this one until four months ago?
Three, six months.
Six months ago, it's in line, it's flying, but yeah. But we've been working on this project for two years, and so to go 18 months into a project and not be told anything about this until six months ago, it's like, what?
I'm just wondering if somebody's requesting the comment period, because, unless there's some kind of CFR that requires it for gun ranges.
Part of it, I think, is because of the reservation being so close. I think that flies something by 100%.
They got with the tribes and everyone's clear that they're to be perfect, so that was good news.
Yeah.
They knew it was a poor one last, so...
I know I asked, but JPC, but I can't remember what time it was.
You did send, you sent it to me. And I just totally have forgotten already.
It was like...
This is your business.
You don't know?
No, this is not...
We only have about 50.
Council here, you guys put it down for us.
I could ask, who's asking for a comment period? Why are we doing one? Because it doesn't make a lot of sense if nobody's asking for one, unless there's some kind of group out there that hates gun ranges that wants to be able to oppose it, or, I don't know.
I know, it's emailed right here.
It definitely makes the NECA more defensible when it has a comment period, and when we've incorporated the comments into it, but...
Well, it's not that we can't build the gun range anyway, it's just we can't use federal dollars to build the gun range.
Unless we have that, yeah. I understand, okay.
It's frustrating.
I'm just more curious.
Just one, I know that we're trying on our side. I just, it's not something that we're putting aside and ignoring, it's...
Yeah.
And in all honesty, if there wasn't such a significant amount of money, yeah, who would agree? We wouldn't have waited this long. Yeah, I agree.
I'm not complaining, I was just curious about...
That is one thing I want to sign before March 2026. Yeah, I'll have it done by then.
So anyway, Josh, the things he wanted to bring up, just two items. Council meetings in November and December. You guys want one or two, just so we can have our planning on our side throughout four of it, so we don't put anything off.
I vote for one, unless there's something immediate need.
Is there, is there gonna be a lot of agenda items? I mean, do we anticipate that there will be a lot going on? Because if not, then I think one is fine, but if there's a lot going on, and we...
I don't think enough to have two meetings, if that's what you're asking. I think we can fit it back to when, we can fit it in our meeting.
Two meetings have been pretty sparse on our agenda. I don't foresee any extra workload coming up in the next couple months. I think just the opposite of people probably. Do you want the... Which? I'd say the first, because you have Thanksgiving and you have Christmas.
So I think November, we do the third one, and December, we do the first.
Will it be election day?
Yeah, the first is election day.
Election day. The third Tuesday would be the week before Thanksgiving. We're in the past, it's up to the following, on the week Thanksgiving, but it's the week before.
The 19th and Thanksgiving would be the 28th.
Right, so I would say the third one in November, personally, and then the first one in December.
Do we have one? Does anybody else have any strong feeling?
I don't have a strong feeling, either way.
I'm good with what I'm...
I'm fine with that. Okay. We'll make sure everything's planned right, and slowly, and have it all that, on those meetings, or that most of them.
Just to make sure I got it correctly, we're in the third meeting in November and the first meeting in December. The other, should be correct, the other meeting, which one can be first?
Yep, and then we're partying on the fifth Tuesday of December. Big party.
Election day.
No, that's not gonna...
Oh, wait. Oh, New Year's, sorry, I was trying to...
Party, but...
Well, that's New Year's Eve. We gotta shoot off some fireworks and...
Yeah.
Do some ice skating. Maybe...
Bring your ice cream out.
Anything else?
I've been really stressed right now, unless there's concerns or questions or feedback that you need to have for me, so...
Thanks for all your...
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any committee reports from the council?
No, not from me, sorry.
Okay, items for future discussion, I think we've talked about, you have any others?
One, one, the APR committee has contacted me to ask about the planning ahead for July for next year. And they're wanting to know how much money would be in the coffers that they could count on from the council. So this is just giving you something to look at. We'll put this on the agenda, and you guys can make this decision at one of the future meetings. But basically, we've spent about a little over $28,000 on fireworks last year. This year's budget for the three celebrations, New Year's, Fourth of July, and UVIC, we have $40,500 in there. So if fireworks are about the same, that would leave about $12,000 that could be at your discretion, given to APR to help pay for the entertainment or whatever on the Fourth of July. The one caveat I will tell you is that Brian's gonna be doing some checking to make sure fireworks prices and whatnot. We saw a significant increase last year. We're hoping that that's...
Is UVIC really only $7,500? No, that's just what we're pushing in.
We put $15,000 in the budget for UVIC, $7,500 is accounted... We put fifteen thousand in the budget for U V I C. Seventy five hundred is a cash donation that we give to U V I C and then the other seventy five hundred has been for the fireworks.
Stay that one more.
She's saying seventy five hundred dollars of the fifteen thousand we have budgeted for U V I C goes to fireworks. The other half goes.
The other half goes to U V I C for, in the form of cash donation.
So the seventy five hundred is just fireworks. And the other is cash donation. So fifteen thousand twelve. Awesome, thank you. Well, if there's nothing else, I don't see a need for closed session.
I know we adjourned.
Perfect, we all second.
I'll second that.
Anyone have a wish? My favorite?
Aye.
The R G. Thank you.
Well, you didn't say anything. Did you come up for anything or just do this what we're doing?
I'm just checking.